Come in.
I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of December 8th, 2025. Please raise, rise to see the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunner.
Ms. Oliver? Kathleen Amor? John Nunes?
Yep.
Mary Beckwith? Here.
Here. This meeting is being recorded. It will be rebroadcast on DCTV and can be streamed on their YouTube channel at any time. We now welcome public comment from the audience on any topic on this evening's agenda.
Hello, my name is Kristen Hikoski. I have two students in Dartmouth. I want to talk a little bit about funding. School costs rise far faster than the annual increase in the state formula. Special education, transportation, staffing, technology, and mental health needs all grow well beyond the two to three percent each year. Yet, schools are expected to absorb those costs without proportional resources. I'm here to encourage our schools to ask for what they truly need, not what they think the town will approve. We can't expect our students to endure any more cuts. It is unfair to ask our educators to meet rising expectations while continually taking away funding. In a recent letter to Dartmouth Week, I discussed the word "minimum." I connected it to common daily practices. I think it is important to think how this word "minimum" pertains to our daily life. If we get the minimum amount of sleep, are we rested? If we get the minimum amount of food, are we nourished? If our child is putting in the minimum amount of work in school, in effort, are we satisfied with their performance? The answer is simple. The minimum isn't acceptable. We need to recognize that the minimum is the floor and not the ceiling. Our actions speak louder than our words. What message are we sending our children when we are settling with the minimum amount to fund our budget? We need to provide our young people and empower our school to ask for what they true, what, sorry, for what they truly need so every Dartmouth student can exceed, grow, and reach their full potential. I encourage the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and school committee to ask for what they need and not to settle. Remember, you are fighting for the most important cause, our future. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Zach Tavares. I'm a parent and a town meeting member. I first want to just start by thanking everyone for their efforts in the community and here. Ongoing, I think there's a lot of momentum around the schools right now. I hope it continues. I mostly want to reiterate what a lot of people have said so far this year. I think it will continue, which is essentially just that this administration and the committee ask for what it needs this year. But I'm going to try to ground it a little bit in the strategic plan. I know that this is preaching to the choir here, so this is for people in the back, so to speak. The focus area four of that plan has an initiative that talks about the schools communicating and advocating for instructional and operational needs of the district, and it's meant to identify structural deficiencies as well, as you know. And the measure of success for that is if we have funded a school that meets those instructional and operational needs. So, I would just ask, as I'm sure it's happening, that as we go through this budget cycle, that we're just running it through that framework the whole time and asking, you know, does it meet this criteria? I think it was a good litmus test. I know the plan wasn't in place last year or the year before, but if we look back and think about the cuts that were made and the contingencies and concessions that the schools had to take for funding and ask, you know, did we meet this initiative under that criteria? I think it would be kind of tough to say that we did. So, I don't think anyone wants to be in that position next year. So, I would ask that we look at that and we look and try to define and quantify, if possible, for us, for us in the community, what it means to invest in the needs specifically, if we can even quantify that further, right? There's a lot of talk about the state averages. You know, does that mean we're trying to go from 1.5 staff per 100 students to 2.6 and be at the state average? Well, what does that mean specifically financially? Is that 40 professionals across the district at a cost of $1 million? You know, I think if we can quantify some of these numbers in some way, it'll be easier for us that are trying to support and rally support around the community to say, hey, this is what it means. This is what we need to move us from this point to this point as a district and to move forward. So, thank you. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Just came from dropping my kid off at piano. So, thank you.
Okay. I believe we've heard from everyone who wishes to speak this evening. So, we will move on to our student representative report. We have Charlotte Alphonse.
Oh.
Approval of minutes?
Okay. I'm sorry. I was gonna let you get, jump ahead. Approval of minutes first. Looking for a motion to approve regular minutes for November 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Amor, second by Miss Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed. So, we have four in favor.
Yep.
So, unanimous. And now, the student representative report from Charlotte Alphonse.
Advisory Council. I'm also a cheerleader here at the DHS, and I am excited to share our student agenda for this month. First, our, like, first about school climate and school and community engagement. Our Fall pep rally was a huge success. Participation was really strong. There was no much school spirit and energy throughout the building. The seniors took first place, juniors second, sophomores third, and freshmen came in last. But we had fun and we were determined to improve next year. As a school, we collected 1,632 non-perishable food items, which our key club donated to the YMCA Full Plate Project. It was amazing to see everyone come together for such an important cause. We also celebrated High Five Friday this past Friday with members of the Dartmouth Police and Fire Department greeting students in the morning. It really helped create a positive and welcome start to the day. Next, class activities and fundraising. A lot of grade-level classes are running fundraisers right now to support future events like junior banquet's, proms, and other activities. Student involvement has been great, and there's a lot of momentum in the building. For academics, our seniors are continuing to receive early decisions and early action notifications from colleges. It's an exciting time, and our counseling department has been working closely with them as they make their decisions. For athletics, winter sports have begun with over 259 students registered and cleared to participate in this season. There's a lot of excitement as teams start their competitions. Finally, about student leadership. Our student advisory council will be meeting with the DHS administrative team after winter break to discuss student-identified areas of focus and bring forward ideas on how we can improve them and continue improving our school community. Thank you for this opportunity to share this update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other things on your agenda, you're welcome to leave.
Okay.
And we will get on with our exciting business of reviewing our policies. No. Oh, we are gonna flip.
Thank you.
I even have a big arrow here. I'm doing well tonight.
That's all right.
We are taking something out of order. We are going to have Kath- Catherine Cooper of Southeastern Massachusetts Education Collaborative, yep, come up to the podium and talk about change in language to their capital reserve account policy.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes just to go over this quickly. As Educational Collaborative, we are an extension of our member school committees. We have 10 member school districts. Our Board of Directors is made up of one school committee member from each one of those districts. Mr. Oliver is our Dartmouth representative, and we are also fortunate to have Mr. Nunes as our treasurer, long-term treasurer. So, many things, most things, our Board of Directors can vote and approve independently, so our budget, our policies, and so forth. But there are a few things that also require the, that the member districts weigh in. One of those is the creation of or amendment to our capital reserve account. So, we, we, with Board and School Committee approval, we created a capital reserve account in 2015. We did amend it once in 2019, and we're looking to make an additional amendment now. I believe you have the language in front of you. In Section 1, we're just adding some clarifying language regarding where the funds might come from that we deposit into the capital reserve account. Our capital reserve account is created to help us fund anything related to our facilities, and also, we can, it can also be used to repair and replace our van fleet. So, this Section 1 language is just some clarifying language around where the funding might come from, and that the Board will approve any deposits to that account, which they already do. This, our capital reserve language under regulation has to have a maximum stated balance, a stated maximum not to exceed balance. We're looking to increase the current language, which is $500,000, to $2 million. We do not have that. I would, I dream of having that. However, we are working with the state legislature right now around the possibility of having some collaborative, specific funding for facilities. We are not eligible for MSBA funding. We do not get facilities aid like the charter schools do. All of our revenue comes from our tuitions and our state contracts for adult services. So, we are, we are, we're starting to make a little headway, we think, with the, with the state around potentially getting some facilities aid specific for collaborative programs. So, in the event that we are successful in doing that, we would, we would want to use our capital reserve account to hold those funds. And, and the last change is in Section 3. We're just adding the word "acquire." We had repair and, repair and maintain language in there, but we, we did purchase a building a couple of years ago. It would have been helpful if we had had, you know, the funding in this account to be able to use it for the down payment and so forth. So, we're just adding the word "acquire" to the potential uses for that language, for the trust. So, I'm happy to answer any, any questions. Otherwise, I would just ask for your approval on these language changes to our capital reserve policy.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? No. It seems quite reasonable. A motion? I believe we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to vote on this.
And Mr. Nunes, you can correct me now because my eyesight's not. I want to make a motion that we approve the amended language. I don't know if I need to get into specifics.
Just a proposed amendment to, for the Southeastern Mass Educational Collaborative Capital Reserve Account from $500,000 to $2 million.
There you go.
And the, and the other, and the other.
And.
And the, the language and the terminology that you spoke of.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Amor, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, since I'm the chair, the treasurer, I will abstain.
Okay. So, we have 3, 4, and one abstaining.
3, 0, 1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. And now, our exciting policy review and update. Mr. Kylie?
That's a lot of pressure. Okay.
It is exciting.
I don't know how to make this exciting. Let's see. So, I guess first I'd like to thank Dr. Seid McGuire for doing an outstanding job covering the first read of proposed revisions to Policy Section D and IKF, IKFE, and JKAA. So, you've been through those, and you, you had a couple of comments with one requested revision. So, based on your feedback, we revised Section, uh, Policy DFD, gate receipts and admissions to better reflect the actual deposit process. So, to note that receipts are verified by Dartmouth Public Schools staff according to procedures for each activity and then deposited with the town treasurer. So, we've made that change, and you provided that in your, in your school committee packet. Other than that, there were no changes since the first read. We'd be happy to discuss any thoughts you may have on the policies at this point.
I have no new questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right.
That was, that was the, the one question I had on, on the gate receipts. And, you know, it was minuscule, but just to put it all in.
Oh, it was a good point, and we've, so we've made that revision, and if there are no further questions, we'd seek your approval of Section D fiscal management review, fiscal management, Policy JKAA, physical restraint prevention and behavior support, Policy IKF, graduation requirements, and proposed new policy IKFE competency determination.
And we need a vote on that? Yes, please.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Amor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, unanimous, 4, 0.
Thank you very much. We'll, you know, I appreciate the efforts of the, of the policy subcommittee and, and our administrative team, you know, getting you these policies, and we'll revise them accordingly on the, on the district website, so they'll be available for everyone. And we'll, we'll move forward, and we hope to tackle more policies. At the moment, we're kind of focusing on budget, but we hope to get through more sections.
Thank you. And I will note that on our posted agenda, we were going to have the quarterly report of the Southeastern Mass Educational Collaborative, but we're gonna table that till next week because Mr. Oliver was not able to be with us this evening. So, that means next up, we're gonna talk about the capital improvement plan, I believe.
I think this is exciting. I'm not sure the policy was.
Well, policy is necessary.
Yes, policy is necessary. So is this. This is necessary too, but it is more exciting. So, we had a meeting with the School Committee Facilities and Fields Subcommittee, Mr. Nunes and Mrs. Amorall, just before Thanksgiving. So, I'd like to thank them for their collaboration in this process. You were provided with the capital improvement plan in your packet, proposed capital improvement plan. So, it included a few things. It included a summary memo of year-one requests and with ranked according to the town priority system, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a, in a moment. And it included summary sheets of all requests for the 10-year period, beginning in fiscal year '27 and going to fiscal year '36, and then a list of descriptions for each of those requests following that. So, what I'm, I'm gonna first just say that, that strategic plan, Section 4, that was mentioned in public comment earlier tonight, is, is guiding our efforts here. We know we need to try and modernize our facilities, and, you know, it's a major component of our strategic plan, and I think hopefully it will be a success. So, what we're going to look at tonight is our year-one requests. We'll look at the whole thing, but we'll focus on the year-one requests. So, these would be requests that we hope will be considered for inclusion on the annual spring or fall town meetings. So, the town meeting in June and the town meeting in October. The first request on the list is a school bus replacement for $150,000. So, this is to replace, we, we own one school bus, and we use it daily for a variety of, of activity in the school district. It's a 2017 Bluebird school bus, and it is at the end of its useful life. So, if we don't replace this bus, we risk having to discontinue our early childhood education program, which brings high school students to the elementary schools on a daily basis to work with young learners. And that's a, a program that produces a certification that when they graduate, they can actually get a job in the field. So, we would also, if we don't do this, have to contract out transportation for a variety of other activities that we currently transport ourselves using the bus. It will not be cheap to try to, if, if we can even find transportation to cover those, you know, those activities. So, our hope would be that this request is considered at the spring town meeting so that we can order the bus promptly. It's gonna take a while to get the bus, most likely, unless we get really lucky. And so, our hope is that that's supported so we can continue to provide the service that, that we currently do to, to our students. And you can feel free to interrupt me anywhere along the way.
Okay.
Or we can answer questions at the end.
Oh, either way.
Yeah.
And I, I may, I don't think I asked this when we met at that, anyway. Is this bus compliant with, does it have to be? Are you looking for it to be compliant with accessibility, like wheelchair, lift, and that sort of thing?
Yeah. It, our current bus does not have a wheelchair lift, so if we have an activity in which we need to have a wheelchair lift, we're, we would contract it out, apparently. It is a thought that we could look to have it, you know, fully wheelchair accessible on a new vehicle, and that makes it more versatile, for sure. So, that's, that's certainly a possibility. For what we use it for, sometimes when you, when you purchase a vehicle that has wheelchair accessibility on a, on a yellow school bus, it is significantly more expensive, so we have to factor that in. And depends on how much we think we're going to, you know, gonna, gonna use it in that capacity. So... So, the next item on the list is flooring replacement. So, $200,000 we've requested. This is to remove asbestos from approximately 10 to 12 rooms of the James M. Quinn School. We've been working on removing asbestos from the schools, I think, since I started here now in year 16 here. the schools, I think, since I started here now in year 16 here. And we have made great strides, particularly at the Potter and DeMello School, somewhat at the middle school. And the Quinn School still has a lot that we need to, that we need to tackle. The, the risk is if you, if you don't do this in a timely fashion, you could potentially have to close rooms or encapsulate floors in the middle of a school year due to deteriorating asbestos conditions. So we don't want to be in that position. It's, it's not something where you want to be abating asbestos in the middle of the school year. You really, it would be a challenge to do that if, if it's possible at all. So our hope would be that we would receive funding for this at the spring town meeting and then we would be able to do what we do and, and take care of the worst of the rooms during the summer. This would not complete the project. Not even close. So this would just be, you know, another, another set of rooms that would be, that would be completed. We really can't do more than this in one summer. We really, this is about what we can do and still open school on time. So it's just the way we have to do it gradually. The next request is technology hardware replacement for $325,000. So this request is one that's pretty, pretty normal for us. You've, you've seen requests for technology hardware replacement every year. We use this to continue to provide tools for, for students. If we don't do this, we would risk not being able to have tools that help advance student learning and meet our state testing requirements. So we really do need to keep up with this. I, I've got to say, Mr. Galishaw and his team do an outstanding job cycling technology through the, throughout the system. So using, using technology to its maximum potential and in multiple uses during its lifespan. So he'd continue to do that and hopefully we'll receive funding for this. Playground improvements for $400,000. So we received at, at the, at the fall town meeting, $100,000 of additional funding for a playground project that we already had. Two hundred and, I think we had about $221,000 left in previous article funding. So that's going to be for one of the playgrounds at the Quinn School. And this request is going to be for a playground at the DeMello School. So our hope is that we can ensure continued use of the playgrounds and we don't have to close sections of playgrounds or close parts of sections of playgrounds. The reality is that our playgrounds are getting old, replacement parts aren't readily available, and they're deteriorating and they need to be addressed.
Go ahead. Okay. In, in terms of playground, I talked about a little bit this in the fields, but the, those playgrounds are open to the public. And if anyone, you know, goes by Quinn Elementary School at any point in time, Saturday or Sunday, you could see that the playgrounds are occupied and used and the wear and tear, I'm sure contributes to the fact that we do allow the community to utilize. Is there any conversation or any possibility? I know this is a capital improvement specific to our needs for the school department, but is there some, any conversations around shared responsibility or shared contribution toward upkeep of those important pieces of playground?
Yes, you're, you're right. I mean, and it's great that the community, you know, uses our facilities and, and, you know, we, we welcome that. At our, one of our meetings with the town administrator and, and the finance director, Dr. Seb Maguire and I talked about this. And right away, it was recognized that, you know, this is a, this is a community issue. It's not just the school issue. So that was great. And that was not really, that was without us.
That's fantastic.
Driving that part of the discussion. So I, our hope is that there's some consideration there for that. There was also some discussion regarding the, the preservation, community preservation funds and whether they might be able to assist. There's been, we, and the school department, although they're not supposed to be used specifically for school-related projects, they could be used for public projects and they have been used for other playground-related projects. So if this is a public playground, which you're making the point that it is, you know, perhaps there could be some funding used, used there or other sources. But, I mean, we're not here, you know, saying where the money's going to come from, but.
Just the need.
Just that. It definitely needs to happen. Telephone replacement with cloud-based IP system. I know, I know Mr. Galishaw was working on this today. So the request is for $120,000. This will ensure communications continue throughout our buildings. FY28, our current system is no longer supported. So we will be on our own. So we really need to, we really need to take a look at that and remedy that. High school roof replacement, this one's a familiar one. So we still have the $6 million number there. We were, we were, you know, thrilled that we got accepted into the Massachusetts School Building Authority's Accelerated Repair Program. They are going to be in the process of appointing a project manager for us and then we'll be moving forward. They've, they've not done that yet. They should be funding approximately 50% of the total cost. We've not gotten to that part of the discussion with them at this point. You know, the roof is, is 25 years old. We have 1,000, you know, daily inhabitants in that, in this building and, you know, really need to make sure that this happens. So so far, everything is moving in the right direction with that. We would look to have a, a roof with at least a 30-year life that would, you know, take care of this building for a long time. So our hope is that, working with the MSBA, we define a more precise number by the time we get to town meeting, which is quite a ways away. So our, our hope is that, that we have that ready to go. HVAC repairs and replacement for $600,000. So this is, sounds like a lot of money, but it really isn't in that world. This request is to continue to repair and replace equipment to ensure appropriate conditions in learning environments. We're fighting a battle every day in this district to try and have temperature-controlled environments. And, you know, our newest, our newest building that we're sitting in right here is, needs a lot of work. Amongst the other, the, the other buildings need even more. So our hope is to continue to try and make improvements in controls and improvements in equipment that will help us, you know, help us maintain a, a good learning environment. We'd hope and try in, in any, if, if there's any possibility to combine those, whatever funds we receive from a capital improvement perspective with utility incentives, possibly green communities money, which we've done in the past and have used to, to great effect for some other projects. So we'd continue to try and do that.
Quick question. Is, are there any funds of, you know, grants available from the state that you're aware of? And I know, and the reason I ask that is I know if my memory's any good, there's a couple of boilers downstairs in this building that we got some type of state or NSTAR ever sourced grants for a while back.
Yeah, we, we did. We, we had the State Secretary of Education down to take a look at the work we had done on the boilers here at Dartmouth High School. We, we may be eligible. So while I don't think, the, the two sources that we might be eligible for relating to this are the green communities money, which is limited because we've done a lot and they try and spread it out to other communities that are working, you know, working on the green communities program. So there's fairly limited amount of, of funds there. The other thing is a, a possible MSBA project. So heat pump technology, which we don't have in any of our buildings, is eligible for the accelerated repair program for MSBA. So one of the thoughts, and there's a proposal, it's expensive and it's a big, it's a big number. It's in the plan. One of the thoughts is, you know, you look at our long-term capital plan, we know that the Quinn School is going to be in existence for a good, long time. It's a well-built school and hopefully it can last. But it needs quite a bit of work. So it has a lot of mostly original equipment from 1967. Now, the boilers aren't original. We replaced those about 14 years ago. But, but all the other equipment, the HVAC controls and the HVAC equipment in the building is original. So one thought is, do we look to the MSBA and try and apply for a heat pump conversion? And while we're doing other, you know, basically renovating the entire HVAC system in that building. And I, I think it would be a good project. I included it on there. I was, I had a, I have a, a good contact who's done a, a project manager who's done a project like that fairly recently. And it, it's, it's expensive. But I think I, let's see. I think on the plan, I put it out two years because we have a bunch of other requests here, but it is geothermal heat pump conversion at the Quinn School FY29.
Seven.
Seven and a half million. And I'm not quite sure about that.
Wow.
So it's, it would be a big project, but it would be a huge improvement at the same time. And you'd be talking about 1967 equipment being, you know, sort of taken offline. So something to think about. So high school track reconstruction, 950,000. This, this isn't a new one, but the, the number changed. So we were way low. We, we had, you know, the, unfortunately, in construction, I, you know, I think there's been a lot of escalation. And since the last time we had somebody take a look at the track, the track has only gotten older. It's, you know, it's been on the list for years. And we're at the point now where most likely it's not just the surface of the track that needs to be done. It's, it's the, the subsurface. So it's a 25-year-old track, which is, you know, at, at least five years beyond its useful life and maybe more. It's used daily by physical education, athletics, and by community members all the time. And if we don't do it, we're going to, at some point, not be able to use it for what its intended purposes. So, and that's coming soon, I think. So our hope would be that we'd receive funding at spring town meeting for this. The, the problem, I mean, that's the soonest we can receive it. The problem with it is I'm not sure that that would get us, give us enough time to get it done this summer. So because there are limited number of vendors who would perform that service, getting on a list and to be able to do that, first of all, project's going to have to be bid out. And we could bid it out before town meeting pending funding, funding, but it won't be a certainty for the, you know, for the bidder. So I, I have a feeling that even if we get it in the spring, it might not, you know, be able to be done over the summer.
No, I was just wondering if the, I know it's still being used. To me, it looks kind of dangerous to use that. And I was wondering, like, A, is it impacting us and our track teams having home track events? And if not, I'm just thinking on the other side, cha-ching, cha-ching, the cost of transportation to, to have track meets at alternate location, I'm sure is quite expensive.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess the, the good news is so far what our approach has been is patching it. And we've, you know, so we're, we're, we're still patching it and we are still using it. But it is coming to the end of being able to do that soon. So.
And I'm just, this just came, don't ask me why, but I, this just hit me. With some of these, and I'm jumping ahead to town meeting, depending, and hopefully CIP approves everything, that type of deal, and I'll get into that when you're finished. But would it be prudent if we were to have a special inside the annual so that these capital items, once we close school June 12th or whatever day it is, type of deal, we can start going to work on them? Or, and/or, for example, the bus could be ordered the next day?
Mm-hmm. So.
Does, you know what I'm saying?
I do. I do. And, and I've lived that now for, you know, the whole time I've been here, the fact that, you know, we, we have a late town meeting.
Yeah.
Most, most communities have an earlier town, you know, town meeting than us. But, I mean, the, the good news is, once it's approved at town meeting, the money can be encumbered. It can't be paid, you can't pay for anything, though. So I've always, you know, played the little float game there, which may be fine. I mean, I guess the likelihood that a school bus is going to be ordered on June's, the afternoon of June 2nd after town meeting and actually need, be in-house and paid for before July 1st, it's not going to happen. So I guess, so from a school bus perspective, that doesn't really help. From a flooring replacement, I think we can, you wouldn't start until the 13th at the earliest, after school, you know, after, after the last day of school. And then you probably can avoid having to pay somebody until July 1st. So you're probably okay with that one. The track, I, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I, I, they won't be completed. So it would just be a matter of whether there's some progress payment that would be due prior.
But it was just, again, just a thought.
Yeah. I usually play the float and kind of just, you know, oh yeah, we've got you, July 1st.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the, the challenge there. But we can commit, though, you know, once, once it's voted at town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we just play the float. We could vote to take, borrow money from, no?
Well, so the, so the issue is that a, the, the annual town meeting can only appropriate for funding from July 1st of 2026 forward.
Got it.
So they cannot appropriate money for, for the current cycle. But they, you could have a special town meeting, which sometimes happens. Sometimes they have one anyway.
Yeah.
Depending on if there are things to, old-year bills to pay and a variety of different things, in, in which items would be placed on, on that special town meeting. And then those funds become available as soon as the vote is, is taken by town meeting. So in our case, I, I don't know, I don't know how much it would help us really, just a thought. Because most likely, we're not paying for, we're not going to complete enough of these projects to have to pay a vendor in the two weeks after school ends to when, you know, most likely. So. So the next request we have on there is a newer renovated school. So I, you know, I think, I think we're at an interesting point. I mean, we put a placeholder of 100 million on there. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the cost is going to be and we wouldn't know. I mean, I, I think the important point is that it's critical that we begin the process of replacing our three 80-year-old buildings. So we have three buildings, all built within, you know, within about a year of each other and, and they're 80 years old. So we've got to start this now. This request itself isn't for immediate funding, but it's made, this request is made to support a submission of a statement of evidence. This request itself isn't for immediate funding, but it's made, this request is made to support a submission of a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority. Our hope is that we prepare the statement of interest and present it to you folks and the select board for a replacement of the existing Dartmouth Middle School building. And we submit that to the MSBA in February. So, coming quick. And it's quite a bit of work, so I gotta get working on that. But, but, but yeah, our hope, our hope would be that we, one, they will announce the opening of their program in January. And then they have a, they have a, a meeting scheduled already for like information about submitting the statement of interest. That's in January, which I'll attend. And then, and then, you know, we'll have it in shape for you folks to take a look at and begin to, you know, decide is it, is, are we ready to do this? Submit this. So, like I said, it will require your support as well as the select board's support to be submitted. And whatever school project, we, again, we'd be eligible likely for about fifty percent based on the town's, the town's economic statistics. So, vehicle replacement of a maintenance truck, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's crazy that a truck costs that much, but it does. This request, we replace a two thousand thirteen Ford truck that we use every day right now. We, we had ordered two trucks, we just got them in on Thursday, Thursday or Friday. And it took us a year to get them. So, we really have to move forward with this. We have, we're, we're putting money into vehicles that we shouldn't be putting money into anymore. We use those trucks every day for maintenance work in the district. They also are our snowplow vehicles. If we, if we don't, then we've got to try and repair rotting vehicles. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, continue to do that. So, hopefully we receive support for that. Stadium renovations, five million six hundred thousand. I mean, I, I think if we do this, we, we preserve that facility for generations. And, and it was, you know, built as a memorial, you know, to, to those who served in, in World War Two. I think it's an important part of the community, and I hope that, I hope that folks support us making sure that it's there for the community in the future. We started the, we started the actual construction of the project in two thousand eighteen. And, you know, we've done some work, but we're not where we need to be, and we need to finish the project. So, hopefully we do. Bathroom renovations, two hundred thousand. So, we, we received some money for bathroom renovations. And if you, if you go, a good example would be, would be the Quinn School. If you go into the bathrooms at the Quinn School, I have pictures of the old, the old dividers and partitions in the bathrooms. They're all rusty with sharp edges on the bottom. Well, they look great now. So, fortunately, we've, we've begun that process of renovating, you know, renovating bathrooms and, and fixtures in the bathrooms. And we need to continue that, so we hope to receive funding to do that. Music equipment of sixty-five thousand dollars. We haven't had a music equipment article in a few years. And we really, much like technology, let's say, you, you need to update music equipment eventually. The music department's outstanding in terms of repairing and cannibalizing equipment, making the most of these, you know, these, the equipment. But, you know, they need to continue to have equipment to be able to serve kids. And similarly, the athletic equipment request of a hundred and forty-five thousand. We haven't had an athletic equipment article. I think it's been, I don't know, ten years, probably. And we really need to take a look at that and ensure that we have athletic equipment for long-term use. So, if we don't do it, you know, we'll do our best to continue to maintain old equipment, but at some point we, we need to tackle things. So, those are our FY twenty-seven requests. So, the total for FY twenty-seven with the hundred million dollar placeholder for, for a new school is one hundred and fourteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Do we want to talk about anything else with fiscal year twenty-seven before we move to the rest of the? Like, I'll, I have some highlights from the rest of the plan.
I just quickly, I just had a clarification on the stadium renovations. And does that amount include ensuring ADA compliance?
Yes.
And wheelchair accessibility?
Full ADA compliance, yes, to the whole facility.
Wouldn't it be nice?
To the stands, to the press box, to the bathrooms, to the kitchen, to the concourses, everything, everything would be ADA compliant. Would be fantastic. And obviously, the facility needs to be renovated. But it, it also structurally, from a concrete perspective, really needs to be preserved. You know, like, that's, that's, that's a big part of this. You know, our hope would be that we got the, the entire structures and maintain, and make sure that they're well-maintained for thirty, forty years in the future. So, I think we can accomplish that. But we've not tackled it now for quite a while. And we've been continuing to try and maintain it and, and do good work on it, and I think that's made a difference. But I do think we gotta, gotta tackle it and finish it before, you know, too much longer. So, there are a lot of other requests in the, in the following nine years of the plan. So, you know, we have window replacements at several schools. Some of those might be dependent upon our actions. So, for example, the D'Amello and Potter School windows. I mean, if we're going to build new schools, I would say, okay, we live with the windows and we, you know. But we have to have that commitment and, you know, the knowledge that we're gonna be doing that. The Dartmouth High School windows, I think, yes. As soon as we're eligible from MSBA, we go back in and, and get the money and, and take care of, you know, the, this building. And ensure it, ensure it's used for a long time. We mentioned the geothermal heat pump conversion possibility at Quinn School. Improvement in repair of our athletic fields. I think, I think we have some issues that should be addressed. But if we build a new building, I think they're going to be. So, I, you know, there's, there's several things on this plan that may or may not, you know, may depend on how we move forward. Another new building to replace an elementary school is really important during the life of this plan. We just can't wait. And then, you know, so, so obviously those, the other requests on here would be impacted by our long-term decisions, our big-picture decisions. The town has asked us to rank things in this priority system. So, this is unfamiliar to you, so I thought it would be important to, to talk about it. So, priority one, they're calling must-do projects. Projects that address public health or safety issues, pose a threat, a threat to providing essential town services, or are required for immediate compliance with local, state, or federal regulations. So, that is priority one. Priority two, should-do projects, being projects that address deferred action items. These projects may be a financial burden due to increased maintenance expenditures, may significantly impact service delivery, or could become unsafe. Priority three, expected to do. Projects that are considered preventative, routine maintenance. These projects are done in line with best practices and intended to maintain level services. These projects may be deferred if needed for a limited time without negatively impacting basic services. And priority four, nice to do, are projects that represent the vision of what the town wants to be. These projects may be deferred if needed, but if implemented would provide a higher level of service, improve operations, and/or enhance productivity. So, I'm just gonna bring us back. This is, again, a proposed plan, so you can, you know, certainly weigh in as to how you think these requests should be prioritized. But the top nine requests I have on the list as priority one. So, again, priority one, addressing public health or safety issues, or pose a threat to providing essential town services, or are required for immediate compliance with local, state, or federal regulations. And I think those nine all, all are important and meet those, that criteria. So, I've included those there. The next three projects are, I guess, in the should-do, priority-two category. Deferred action, projects that may be a financial burden due to increased maintenance expenditures, or may significantly impact service delivery, or could become unsafe. I think that those projects all fit that criteria. And then the last two are expected to do, are projects that are considered preventative, routine maintenance. We're talking about equipment that our kids use every day, that we need to, you know, we need to maintain. So, I didn't have any nice-to-dos on this list because there's so many other things, there's so many must-dos. But in the, you know, there are some nice-to-dos in the, you know, in the plan overall, the ten years, if we were to classify things. But I think it's important to focus on what we have before us, and since we have so many must-dos and several should-dos, and several expected-to-dos, I think we've got to hopefully get most of this done, and soon.
Could you provide rationale, the bathroom renovations, as I understand them, are, like, some of the equipment is old and pointy and jagged and visualizing rusty and, and dangerous. Why, what was your rationale? I know you're thoughtful about all of this.
On should, on making that a should-do?
Why is that a, why is it a two versus a one?
So, I, I mentioned earlier, and I, I think, you know, the more, the best example is the work we've done at the Quinn School, where we, we have been targeting those areas in which we had significant safety concerns.
Okay.
So, so we're tackling that first, and, you know, for obvious reasons. But I do think that there is a lot of deferred, I mean, there's, we have buildings from the fifties and sixties. So, there is a lot of deferred action, you know, on these. So, that is why I think it, it probably better meets that category. The other criteria in priority two is may significantly impact service delivery. So, there's things, bathroom-related, stadium renovations, vehicle replacement for the maintenance truck, that would severely impact our service delivery, you know, if we're not able to function. So, I, I, I felt that was the best priority category for those. But, you know, it's, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it if, if the committee, you know, feels differently about those rankings.
So, I'm confused about, we're gonna ask the town for this money, if we all decide that, including the renovated school. So, they're gonna vote that they would give us the money, like, that's a provisional, that, that, we don't usually ask for something that, like that. I just don't understand how that works.
Yeah, and I, and I think the, so it's there as a placeholder, the money for the new school. So that it doesn't go unnoticed and that we understand the general possible scope of a project that we are asking. What we will be asking for is support in terms of a statement of interest. We most likely at June, at the June second town meeting, will not be asking for feasibility study money, let's say. Which would probably be the first step if we were to get accepted into the MSBA program, core program right away. I don't think we would know in time. I don't believe if we're, to be accepted by MSBA prior to June town meeting, I don't think that. So, I think it's likely that there wouldn't be any actual money requested at the June town meeting. Now, it could be in October, if the MSBA said, okay, we're gonna build a school in Dartmouth. If you folks supported it, if the select board supported it, we submitted, and MSBA thinks it's a good project, well, a worthy project that they have money for, because they can only do so many of them, because they are expensive. Then, then, yeah. I, I could see a possibility in October needing, needing funds to begin that process of paying a project manager to work with the district on feasibility study and looking at, and, and designers looking at options for how we move forward with that project. So, so I could put five million dollars instead of a hundred million dollars or any, I, I mean, there, there's a variety of things you can put there. But I think, I think the other projects on the list represent actual funding requests. And that is more of a placeholder based on how we move forward as a community.
No, I would just add to that, that I think it's important to put out to the community really what the financial implications are, not only for this year, but for the future. And so, a hundred million dollars isn't, you know, I, I don't think, it's not an unreasonable request. And so that people aren't surprised later. If we put in five million and then next year come back and say, oh, we really need a hundred million.
Yeah.
Right.
That wouldn't sit well with people.
No. Correct. Thank you.
So, again, we can, we can discuss the rankings or talk about, you know, talk about the, the projects that were proposed more, if you'd like. But it will be up to your discretion, how you wanna act on this proposed plan. You could consider a vote tonight if you would like to. Or you can take it under advisement and, you know, vote at a future meeting. I would, I would just caution that we wouldn't want to wait too long to, to begin the process on the town side. So, once you folks have a plan that you feel is appropriate, then, you know, we'll begin the advocacy on the next stage. So.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just a, a general comment, and again, Kathleen and I, you know, worked with Mr. Kylie on this one. Had some good discussion that night. But, you know, something that I was looking at as we did this, there's three big-ticket items in here. The, the roof replacement, the newer renovated school, and the stadium renovations. That's, that's a hundred and eleven million dollars. Okay? So, if you take a hundred and eleven million dollars out of the hundred and fourteen that's there, it's, you know, two point nine million dollars is what we're asking for this year in normal capital items, you know, that type of deal. I mean, the other, the, those three are three big-ticketed items that are gonna, something that's gonna last a long time, those three items, type of deal. So, I mean, the everyday maintenance, you know, school bus flooring, telephone, computer, that type of deal, you know, day-to-day, two point nine million dollars type of deal. So, I mean, I think this is, this is an excellent plan. I don't want somebody, you know, I can, you know, no disrespect, I can see somebody looking, you know, the headline being, "School Department Asked For A Hundred And Fourteen Million Dollars In Capital Items." And they don't read the, read the rest of the article, and it gets lost, type of deal. Yes, it's a hundred and fourteen million, but there's three big- Yes, it's $114 million, but there's three big capital items there for $111 million, type of deal. So, I don't want the other items to get lost in the shuffle, is, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Good point.
Personally, I'm good with this, exactly the way that Mr. Kylie has got them laid out, and prioritized, and, you know, needing certain items in the June town meeting, so that we can get them done over the summer. I'm absolutely fine with the way this is, and personally, I'm ready to vote, but I leave that to my committee members.
I'm ready to vote.
I am as well.
All right, we need a motion.
So, I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the capital improvement plan as presented by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of finance and operation, and the amount of $114,565,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll begin the next stage of advocacy for, for these requests.
If you get a date, Mr. Kylie, that you're going to CIP, if you let me know.
Hopefully.
You know?
Yeah.
If I'm able to, I'd love to, excuse me, be there.
Thank you.
All right. And we were just gonna talk about the fiscal year '27 budget timeline.
Right back to you, Mr. Kylie.
Okay.
You'll have your moment.
Another exciting topic, so. So, you had in your packet the, the budget timeline. I shared a similar budget timeline with you during your summer retreat, hasn't changed much. We've been busy behind the scenes, working on budget development. Principals and directors are currently preparing their budgets for submission on Friday, this Friday. I've already received one. They will be expressing their needs and aligning those requests and needs with the strategic plan, which is our, our compass, our guide to how we're gonna proceed through this process. We had a budget subcommittee meeting last week, and I think a productive meeting, talking about how we are moving forward with, with our budget preparation, and approaching the point where we're going to have additional budget subcommittee meetings, and get to the point where we're ready to present to the school committee in February. And I think that's about all I have on this. I don't know if you have any questions or comments regarding the timeline?
I don't have a question on the timeline. I just wondered, you know, in, in the usual way in which buildings sort of submit their needs, this time specifically, you know, against the strategic plan and how it aligns, would it be prudent for us to, in the spirit of asking what we need? I mean, I know we do this in a different way, historically, but aligning the requests, not, not submitting a proposal, hopefully I'm being clear, that says, this is what we're funding, this is what we're not, or to vote on what we fund, what we don't fund, but a prioritization, sort of similar to the, the rubric that the town is asking us to abide by, so that it's not like we're not gonna fund, it would then be incumbent upon us to say, you know, based on those ratings, so that then would translate to the town, like, we've taken your process and implemented it, and this is what we've come up with. I mean, we might argue they're all ones, because we're in the business of public education, but I think there might, maybe, I just, I just wanted to put that out there, that it might be prudent to sort of plan and align some of the prioritization, this, the way that the town is doing it. I don't know. Two cents.
The schools are already in motion, one already being turned in, so it'd be difficult.
Just to, we could back up a little bit, and when we are coming forward to you, we could talk about our priorities, which we actually do talk about our priorities.
You do, yeah.
When they come before the committee. So, I don't think that that's unreasonable. We have to find a way to kind of retrofit it, maybe, but that doesn't mean that's not something that.
Or even just a sort of an extra line to say, thinking about the rubric the town has for prioritizing this capital improvement stuff, this is how we have our internal needs, and how they are prioritized. Again, they may all be ones, but to say that we've taken a step to say, wow, you've, you've asked us to do this for this body of money, or this body, this request, that kind of thing.
And I would hope we, we do see twos and threes, meaning that.
No, right, but, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, there will be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not overly fond of that ranking system.
No, I'm not either, but.
But, but I think, I think the important part, from a budgetary perspective, is, and I think, I think the committee, we, we feel, like, Dr. Seaver McGuire and I feel we have an understanding of what the committee's expectation is, certainly what the budget subcommittee's expectation is, and that we are gonna be prepared to present and incorporate the needs that are necessary for us to accomplish our key strategic plan objectives into the budget. And that's the way, that's how we hope to bring it forward to you. And, so, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know that they're gonna be, you know, ranked one, two, three. We're gonna be, we're gonna bring you a budget that can help us achieve the goals of the strategic plan.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
And I, and I'll just add, wanna, you know, we, obviously, Mr. Kylie will have, you know, everybody will submit their budgets on Friday, but what I think, when we come back, what I think we'll be confident in talking to you about, related to the budget and the budget requests, are that the conversations that we're having, as we're out in schools, talking with principals, and school leaders, directors, we're not hearing anything that surprises us in terms of what the needs are out in the schools, and that's really what you want, right? So, we've had a couple of meetings with a couple of principals who have, who have asked for certain support positions, and we've already talked about it. And so, what that means is that you really see a district strategic plan connected to school improvement plans, and then the budget you see is, is clearly, the budget requests are demonstrating that real connection that exists across the school district. So, that's, that's what you'll hear from us when we get into talking about a more formal presentation of our budget requests.
So, it's okay to skip?
Yeah, I was just trying to, you know, I don't, yeah, I don't like that rating system either. Everything we do is a one.
Because, I mean, we can't put a two next to a person, right? So, we're talking about people, right? Lots of times when we're talking about budget requests, it's connected to a person, and a position that we need. And so, if we're asking for it, then, like you said earlier, it's a one.
Right. Thank you.
Everybody good? All right.
Okay.
Dr. Seaver McGuire.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So, as I was starting to think about the superintendent's update for this evening, I, I couldn't help but really be reflective of the fact that this is my third year of being here in Dartmouth, and that, even though that's true technically, and I say this in the best of ways, I feel like I've been here forever. And I say that in the most positive of ways, and I think that that couldn't be, you know, clearer in the time that I and our team has spent out in our schools, and will continue to spend in our schools in the next few weeks. There are just so many wonderful things going on across the school district, and things that really need to be celebrated. And, you know, under teaching and learning, you know that we have the implementation of CKLA, the professional development that goes along with it. Watching how that is impacting teaching and student learning out in the field is where you really get that validation that this was the, the right commitment for the district, the committee to support. We talk about budget, and how important it is that you make those kind of decisions that allow us, as a school district, to invest in those kind of resources that are making such a difference. The kids, the students are really excited about a lot of the content, because remember, as you've heard Mrs. Paveo talk, this is a content-based literacy resource, and you can see the difference it's making, and the excitement with which kids are sharing their learning. And at the same time, walking through classrooms right now, I mean, it's the holiday season, you know there are lots of distractions, there are a lot of really fun things going on across the school district, and at the same time, I see kids that are focused on what they need to be doing, and that teaching and learning continues. One of the things that Mrs. Paveo did earlier, just a couple of weeks ago, is she surveyed the faculty at the elementary level across the district around the, the implementation of the instructional schedule that we've implemented this year. I wanna say that getting quite a few responses, I mean, the responses are great, and it's overall positive. That doesn't mean that there aren't tweaks to be made here and there, and, and if I haven't said this, and if I have, I apologize for repeating myself, but the schedule that Mrs. Paveo put together for the elementary level really is truly just a brilliant schedule, and it supports teaching and learning and professional development in such a positive, and I would say, a, a way that is making a difference in really the teaching and learning experiences of students, regardless of which elementary school they're in, which they're all amazing. So, we've established a professional development committee, and as a result, again, survey data, and I keep mentioning survey data, because I think it's important to articulate the, the emphasis that we, as a school district, are putting on, seeking out a teacher voice, and using that voice in the decisions that we're making. So, the professional development committee was a result of data that we collected, and now we have collected additional data, and I know we mentioned this, that the five-session strands for professional development, that we're reinstituting that, that was something that people across the district had, they, they'd given us feedback, saying that was something that they enjoyed, and they felt that it was really applicable to their practice. And so, just at the elementary level, we will have rotate through targeted strands, and this is from what we've heard from out in the field, it's technology, it's math, ELA content, social-emotional learning, sheltered English immersion, that's our SEI work that we do with our English language learners, special education. So, we're going to be able to offer our educators and our staff, because for the first time, we'll also be including ESPs as part of the professional learning opportunities that we're offering, so we're excited about that, and to be able to, again, have focused professional development that is in alignment with our school improvement plans and our district strategic plan. Because all of these, regardless of the professional development, the content of that professional development session will be connected in some way to school improvement plans and to district strategic plans. So, I would also mention to you, if you haven't seen the, some of the news outlets that, from the governor's office, presentations, definitely newspaper articles about the new, or the proposed graduation requirements. I would say this to you about that, it is so uncertain right now that I think as a district, we have the right, I think we have the right approach. I think that we've done a really good job here, all along, from the time that we found out that the MCAS graduation requirement, not the MCAS, because we still have the MCAS, was lifted, that the district has responded well to that, and it has not disrupted our students' learning, it hasn't interrupted teaching and learning, and it has not in any way disrupted a student's opportunity to earn their high school diploma here in Dartmouth. So, we're kind of taking a patient wait-and-see, and I would say, from some of the conferences and webinars I've been a part of, there's still so much uncertainty that that's a good place to be, wait-and-see, because I think it's going to take some time to get to a place where we're in agreement about what if, what and if there will be new state-mandated graduation requirements connected to the state being involved in, in developing and scoring those tests, because that's the conversation right now. So, we'll keep you updated as, as we go along, until we really have something concrete to talk about. I just think that hearing every proposal that's out there would be exhausting.
Wait five minutes, I'll change.
That's kind of my, yes, so thank you. But I'm happy to talk to any one of you about that, if you're interested. At the high school level, I did have the opportunity to attend the pep rally. You heard our student talk about that. I have to give kudos to the staff and faculty, and the kids at the high school. Did you get a, did any of you get a chance to come up? It really is fun, it's a fun time to bring the school community together, to celebrate, and really, everyone was engaged. The, you, if you looked in the stands, sure, if you have a student here, you heard about it, but if you looked in the stands, it was really fun to watch how the kids were so engaged in celebrating each other, even when they kind of, some of the upper-class people boo the freshmen. It's not nice, apparently. And it's not that loud.
Friendly rivalry.
It's friend, it's friendly, it's friendly booing, if there's ever such a thing. So, we talked a lot about budget capital improvement, but I will mention, because Mr. Galishar did ask me to talk about the new district servers that have been installed, along with upgraded battery backup and file-backup systems, and this is what my piece in this, and sharing this with you is, it's, you know, these are the invisible things that happen, right? The day-to-day, they're not really fun to talk about or think about, but it's much like Mr. Kylie was talking about earlier, with capital improvements, those aren't always the most obvious. It's like replacing, you know, your roof. It's, unless you're getting a really fancy roof, it's really, like, not that much fun. But, it needs to be done, right? So, same kinds of things, but it's critical, as we know, to keep our systems running reliably, and we are expecting with these changes that this will certainly have the impact that I know that Mr. Galishar and his team need to, to happen, to keep us running. We're still, Mr. Kylie already mentioned, we're still waiting for acceptance into the MSBA. Well, not acceptance, I'm sorry, we have acceptance, we're waiting to hear about our next steps. And I'm imagining that's going to happen shortly, I think in their timeline, it said December, January. On the HR front, we're still ongoing hiring. Again, I'll just mention Mrs. Gentner, because she'll be mad at me for doing it, but she just does such a tremendous job, just keeping the wheels turning when we do have folks that are ready to join our team. It's, you know, right away, she's responsive, and she gets folks in there, and we get them into our schools where we need them right away. And so, I'm really grateful, and I have had folks across the district who are doing the hiring at the building level, who are always praising Mrs. Gentner, and how responsive she is to making sure that they get the folks they need in their schools as soon as possible. So, but we remain committed to finding the right candidates. So, under our third priority, safe and supportive schools, vape detectors have been installed in all of the student bathrooms now, here at Dartmouth High School. That's, again, part of an ongoing safety effort. We're identifying, the high school team is working together to develop clear response protocols for what we do when we see, inevitably, we're, we're going to see that there's going to be not an uptick in vape use, an uptick in recognizing the challenge that we have here at the high school, much like any high school, so, not unique to Dartmouth, but we are, we are committed to an approach that balances the inform, information, the health risks associated with vaping, and still reinforcing that we aren't going to tolerate vaping in our schools, because we're not. in our schools, because we're not, it's just most, you know, years ago, it was smoking, right? And we didn't, we didn't tolerate that then, and we're not going to tolerate vaping now, mostly because it's not good for you. Those are the things that we're looking to do, is to educate our students. And we also had our first training session regarding some of the newer safety protocols that we're putting into place, and I thank Kim Redlon, the entire crisis team, for putting together some really high-level professional development for really what is a team across the district. There are represented, representatives from every school, and in turn, they go through some, I would say, extensive training. It's with Homeland Security. We also had members of Dartmouth PD there, again, bringing the community together for this kind of professional learning, so that we all have an understanding of what the expectations are, what protocols are, what safety measures the schools are taking, and that the Dartmouth profession, the Dartmouth Police Department is right there and working closely with us. And in turn, what will happen is those folks that were their representatives from across the district, they will be the, this is the train-the-trainer model. So, they will bring that back to their schools, and we're looking forward to seeing the impact that's going to have. I would also mention that the recent musical SpongeBob seems like it was very popular, a lot of fun for people, a lot of, I would say, young people probably particularly enjoyed that. But there's so much going on, as I mentioned, there are band, I think there's performances this evening at the middle school, but that would, again, contribute to what I talked about earlier, which is a school district that's engaged in a lot of festivities, festive, happy, you know, they're happy places to be. And then finally, I would just mention, again, Kim, thank you for putting this together with the police department, the fire department, and I think EMS, who we've done our first ever, what we're calling High Five Fridays. And so, those first responders were at all of our schools, greeting our students. You heard our student, our freshman student representative talk about that happening here at the high school, but that happened at every school in the district. And overall, what we're hearing is it was really fun, and the kids were excited, and we have a, at least one more planned for this year, but it will be something that we build into our schedule as a way to bring our community together. That's High Five Fridays. That's my report.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I feel you cover all the bases.
Right.
I do not have much to add, though I will say, I had never watched SpongeBob SquarePants in my life, and I thought, why am I going? It was great.
It was.
It's a great message, there was great energy, it's a great group of kids, it's a great program, and we're lucky to have it, is what I'd say. And also, concert season is upon us, and if you're bored, there's something to do almost every single night here at one of our schools.
Just about.
Mr. Noon, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. You were talking about all the holiday concerts coming up and everything else, and two weeks from tonight, December 22nd, Dartmouth High School is gonna be putting on our annual POPS Scholarship Concert type of deal. And I am proud to say that our Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance, Mr. Kylie, is our honorary this year.
Oh, great.
Nice.
So, we will be honoring him, we will be honoring him that night for all his work and such, and that starts, starts, the concert starts at seven o'clock, the doors open at 6:30. So, it'll be a great evening, it'll be, you know, and it'll be all the performing groups, the orchestra, the chorus, the stage band, the concert band, so...
Very nice.
And you won't have to listen to me because...
I will say, if you go, you won't regret it.
No, you won't. And the students are gonna be doing most of the announcing.
That's terrific.
Great.
That's, that's all I have.
All right, anybody else? No? Okay. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, January 12th, 2026, at 6:00 PM, to be held here at the Dartmouth High School Library Media Center.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I will not be here, I'll be out of town.
Well, I hope you're having fun.
I will, I promise. It'll be, probably with all due respect, we'll be warm.
Oh, well.
Hopefully.
Okay. Yes, I'll wear my coat and think of you.
Okay.
So, I need a motion to adjourn.
Always so moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Never.
Merry Christmas, everybody.